All right. Thank you for joining us for this evening for the January 31st, 2023 Joint Special Meeting of the City Council and Site and Architecture Commission. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, commissioners, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members and commissioners, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute when you want to speak. For tonight's meeting, we're using Zoom to host the joint special meeting of the City Council and Site and Architectural Commission. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, Chat and Raise Hand. Please use Chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member or commissioner speaking. Please use Raise Hand to be recognized by the mayor and able to speak with the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the Raise Hand option to comment. Participants calling in from telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. And lastly, because we're not all in the same room, all votes in this meeting will be taken by roll call.
Thank you. I'd like to call the Joint Special Meeting of the City Council and Site and Architectural Commission to order at 6:08 PM. Maybe we have a roll call.
Also, commissioners, Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Conley.
Here.
Commissioner Ballas, Robra, Manian. Commissioner Diva Bustra, if I'm saying that correctly. Sir Bastaba. Not here. And Chair Zeiler, here. Thank you. Councilmember Craig.
Do we have a call?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then, so Councilmember Craig is on his way, so he's not here right now, but he will be joining us shortly. Councilmember Alaki.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walshner.
Present.
And Mayor McEachran.
Present.
Thank you.
Our first item of business is the Site and Architecture Consideration of the Sixth Cycle Housing Element for the City of Monteserino. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, thank you. The Housing Element is part of the city's general plan and identifies policies and programs to meet the housing needs of the city's current and future residents. State law requires that every city and county in California adopt a housing element every eight years. The updated Monteserino Housing Element will cover the planning period of 2023 through 2031. The draft housing element was submitted to the state for a 90-day review in October, and comments were received on January 9th. The majority of comments received were requesting additional information and more detailed information. A few examples of these include additional analysis needed to explain the cumulative effectiveness of the last housing element's goals and programs. Another example was to provide additional justification on the affordability assumptions for the new ADUs that are planned, and also to modify the draft programs to specify quantified objectives and ensure that more programs are completed earlier in the planning year than was previously noted. A main focus of the state's comments was that Monteserino needs to plan for multifamily housing, and this was repeated several times in their comment letter. A program has been added to the revised housing element before you tonight that includes a study of potential multifamily densities and sites within the city, and for that study to be concluded by the end of 2024. Other revisions have also been made to address the comments from each CD, and those include additional data and analysis on the effectiveness of the previous housing element. Information has been added to justify the affordability levels that are projected for the new ADUs, and the programs have been modified to move several programs up earlier in the planning period. The revisions made to address each of the comments from the state is detailed in attachment into the staff report. The revised housing element was published online on January 24th, and the public comments that have been received are attached to the staff report also. After the public hearing and the council comments, staff recommends that the Site and Architectural Commissioners make a motion to recommend to the City Council adoption of the resolution to adopt the sixth cycle housing element. And subsequent to that, staff would recommend that the City Council make a motion to, a separate motion to adopt the resolution adopting the sixth cycle housing element. This concludes the staff report. I'm available to answer any questions, as well as Andy Flower from EMC Planning Group, who has been our consultant on this project, is also available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Let the record show that Councilmember Craig arrived at 6:11 PM. So I'd like to open it for questions from Site and Architecture at this point.
I don't have any questions for staff.
I don't have questions for staff. You're very thorough. Thank you.
No.
Okay.
All right. If there's no questions from staff on this, what I'd like to do is open the public hearing with respect to the Site and Architectural Commission and see if there's any comments. Members of the public, please raise your virtual hand, and we will recognize you. You will have three minutes to speak. There are no hands raised, and there are no members of the public.
Sorry, we just got a hand raised.
We did have a hand raised.
Alex, can you hear us?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Hi.
Alex, go ahead. You have three minutes to speak. And at the end of three minutes, I would ask that you end your sentence. Go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Alex. We've been talking before, and I also wrote the public comments. I didn't actually hear from you guys, but here, I just want the one question that clarifies. So I know you guys are making decision to make the adoption of this housing element. My question is, if the HCD has approved the housing element draft, if it's not, the adoption, does it mean is getting our housing element got, get the compliance with the HCD requirement? If not, I, I, from what I heard, like if this doesn't have the compliance, the housing element, there is this consequence. I'm just trying to clarify that this means it's approved, and we have, Monteserino have a compliance, the housing element for the sixth cycle. If not, then to which date it means it is a compliance? I'm not sure if I get myself clear, but it's more like a question or clarification from you guys. What does it mean by adoption, approved adoption? What does it mean? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We will be bringing it back to council at a certain point, and I believe we will ensure that your question is addressed. Are there any other virtual hands raised?
None.
There are none. Since there's no one in the audience that wishes to speak, and there's no one online that wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing for the Site and Architectural Commission. I would now like to bring it to council, or sorry. Or sorry, sorry, for, for this. Site and Architecture can now have their discussion. Thank you.
Oh, who would like to leave? Go ahead.
Right. I think that the questions posed have been addressed in the revised version of the element, and I would recommend that we recommend to City Council that it be adopted and it's modified.
Commissioner Conley, do you have comments?
No.
I agree with Commissioner White's comments. I think the staff did a great job addressing the questions raised by the current form of the report. So I guess then I will make a motion to recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution to adopt Monteserino's sixth cycle housing element. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
And Ms. Perkins, would you like to do a vote? Yes. Commissioner Conley?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
Yes.
And Chair Zeiler? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll bring it to City Council. Do we have a staff report, please?
We have this, we have the same staff report if you'd like to make a reading.
It is the same staff report.
Correct.
Okay. So I'll ask council if they have any questions of staff.
Yeah, thank you for the, for the stuff, but you think it's a lot of stuff there. And you identified some of the main elements that it should be raised, concerns about the warrant for the detail. Can you go through each item and indicate where in staff report you tell them that that's possible?
So the, yes, the table in attachment two to the staff report is lists each of the comments that we received from HCD, provides a summary of the response, and includes the specific page number where the changes were made.
Yeah, so I was directing more to the items that you talked about the most important objection that they were raising. I think one was affordability.
Correct.
That was one of the objections they had, and I, I saw the proposals that were being made as to how we're trying to make it affordable. I'm wondering if that's going to go far enough, or whether Monteserino should budget some amount that will be used to subsidize or somebody help people who will provide, who have ADUs and the landlords are looking to rent them out. We're looking to make them affordable, and one way to make them affordable obviously reducing the permit fee helps. But I think you may, and this may be something we need to consider later on, but I wonder if the report, if we were adding that Monteserino is also considering either setting up an endowment or some kind of a yearly budget, whether it's a hundred thousand or more or less depending on our own financial conditions. But one, one thought that that may work would be to do some kind of endowment where just the interest alone would be enough to subsidize someone's housing. I know Los Gares apparently has some money available for affordable housing, and maybe we can work with Los Gares to help with subsidies, and we can also work with West Valley Community Housing Services, because they have subsidies. But I'm maybe adding something, a sentence or two, saying that we're also looking at that. And we'll be looking, because I think a hundred thousand dollar budget for Monteserino wouldn't be doable. You have five minutes or sitting in the back. I think that may be doable. It might only be maybe a couple of years, so we could end up helping with subsidy. That might help our efforts. Do you think that's something that would appeal to the city? One of the questions at this specific time.
We do have, I'm just looking for it right now, in our program for incentivizing the ADUs, we do have a notation that we will be reviewing the success, I guess we would say, of our ADU program at the mid-cycle of this, of the period this housing element covers. So that would be about three to four years from now that we would be reviewing where we stand with new ADU construction, and if it is in line with what we're planning. And if not, we would need to reanalyze other options and programs for.
Yeah, so I mean, that's good to be able to review that, but I don't think that gives the affordability element any, you know, push. So putting something in there, I will also be, you know, considering adding funds to help provide for affordable housing and depending on our budget and setting up some kind of foundation. So, and they may come back and say, tell us more about it, and I hope we will have time to discuss it and figure it out.
Yes, we can certainly add that.
Perhaps our consultant, Mr. Flower, could address that since he knows the document, all the details in the document.
I, yes, we do have one program that is specific about working with local agencies. It is implied that one of those agencies might be West Valley Community Services. So oh, certainly. There's, there's one program where we do state that there, there would be reaching out and working with community organizations. And it is implied that West Valley Community Services would be one of them. So this concept of an endowment could certainly be, it could be a result of many of the programs that, that we bring forward. The fact that we don't have it specified in this draft doesn't mean that it couldn't come true. Doesn't mean that you couldn't still bring it forward, and it could also be reported out with the annual progress report to HCD in, as you do each spring.
Thank you. I know that Councilmember Turner has her hand raised, but I'd like to make a comment and ask a question, and then we'll go to Councilmember Turner. I believe that the City of Monteserino monitors are permitting for ADUs. It's in the, it's in the housing element saying that we've, we've actually granted X number. I think it's 10 permits for ADUs between July 1st and December 31st in the document, and it also talks about multiple surveys that were done, and there's a table of how much the ADUs are being rented for. So that's a question. Can you confirm that that is in fact the process that we're going through, Ms. Perkins?
Yes, we did include, as a response to some of the comments from the state, some additional information to justify the affordability assumptions that we're using for the ADUs, and that is based on surveys that we have completed annually. That's mailed to each property owner who's received a building permit for an ADU and asking them what their intention, how they intend to use the structure, and what, what rent they charge for it. So we base that on the actual responses that we receive from the city.
Thank you. My impression is, is that our ADUs will be used for either elderly parents of people that are own the home, and they build the ADUs for those people or for their parents, and/or if there's caregivers that are required for the people that are in the house, that they provide the ADU as, to house their caregivers. And also, sometimes if the parents are there in the house and their, their children need a place to live for a few years, they're making the, building the use from them. These are, these are, I found this through conversations with our residents and our constituents. So that's, I'm just saying that that's how it's addressed. And I think I would be reticent at this point in time to put an obligation in our housing element or some sort of an endowment or something. I think that as we receive feedback every year on the progress of how we're doing, that, that we'll be able to understand if we're creating the units that, that we are required to, to create and the affordability of those units. So I, I think we can deal with that in the future.
And my thought, if you don't put that in now, it's, it's going to come back and say you're, you know, you're racially segregated community, and you're not doing anything to help out affordable housing. I think we need something in there that would convince them that they're moving in that direction. But those are the big objections that come up that, you know, for some reason we're very racially segregated, you know, that has nothing to do with race, obviously. And so for any incentives and affordability, may, may alleviate some of that concern. That's, that's, that's my thinking behind it. Especially with the West Valley Community Services, and everybody else involved, they're looking for some affordable housing. An ADU myself, in this area is not going to be, may or may not be affordable. There's a very strong story behind this area. So that, that's right. Putting that in may help us with getting this, get this. That's a discussion, I think, yes.
Okay. Do we have more? Sorry. I also wanted to have a, I wanted to ask about the, the comments. So we submit, my understanding of the process is we submit our housing element in substantial, because we, if we were to find it in substantial compliance with the, with the law, with the requirements, then we submit it to HCD. They then have a number of days to review it, and then they provide comments back. We then can respond to their comments, and we have to, sorry, that we have to submit the final version. Could you just describe that process that I am somewhat aware of?
Definitely. And I will also ask Andy if he can add anything at the end. I think he's been through this process with, with other jurisdictions also. So he might have some additional details, but yes, presuming that the City Council adopts the housing element tonight, we will, our plan would be to submit the revised document to HCD tomorrow. They will have a 60-day review timeframe. We will also request a mid-cycle review meeting with HCD staff. So in about 30 days, around the beginning of March. We did try and reach out to HCD several times to have such meeting during the draft housing element review, and even after we received their comment letter, and we did not receive responses to our, our multiple emails. So we will definitely, I guess, be perhaps a little more assertive in pushing for a mid-cycle review meeting, which would allow us to explain to HCD, you know, any, or answering the questions they may have, as well as make any non-substantive changes that would then hopefully warrant certification by HCD at the end of the 60 days. Otherwise, they may provide us additional comments. We would revise the document to bring it back to the commission of the council.
So let me just, you know, I know Andy hasn't spoken yet, but so we file on 1/31. We approve on, if we were to approve tonight on, on 1/31, then tomorrow it gets filed with the state, HCD. Then they have 60 days to respond to us with written comments or to accept it. And you are saying that halfway through that, you would like to have a, a conversation with them as to their progress, as to how they're going with their review, and if they've got any items that, that they would like to convey to us that we can start working on.
Correct, or clarification.
Or clarification so that, so that they could then approve it or, or go for it with other comments. If they were to make comments like they did on our draft, then what's the process after that? How many days do we have to respond to that?
I'm not exactly sure how many days we would have to respond. I might ask Andy or Sergio if they would know. It would need to be fairly quickly in order to.
I, from the last meeting last night, I heard it was somewhere around 30 days that.
It might be.
Andy, we'll go to you. Is that okay? Can, can you verify those items for us, and then on to Sergio?
Yes, I will.
You can also clarify what the repercussions are if they don't approve it within the time period.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last question. Clarify. So in terms of the, the timeframe for HCD review, it is in fact 60 days. The council adopt, basically, if the council adopts the housing element, it might, it would be the city's official and final housing element. In, in the draft resolution, there is some authority that is included for staff to make non-substantive corrections and revisions, particularly in response to HCD comments. And that is in the hopes that, you know, during the 60-day review process, to the extent that HCD raises any issues with the housing element adopted by the city, that staff can try to address those issues in the hopes that HCD will simply certify the city's housing element. If HCD, at the end of that 60-day review period, refuses to certify the city's housing element, then it has to issue written findings to the city, basically finding that this city's adopted housing element violates state law. The city has a 30-day period in which to review and, well, actually, HCD is supposed to provide a reasonable time, no longer than 30 days. But my understanding is HCD typically provides 30 days for the city to review the comments and findings of HCD and, you know, basically make further amendments to its housing element to get into compliance. Now, typically, there's, if you fail to make the revisions within 30 days, there's not an immediate consequence other than you don't have a compliant housing element. And you may have some risks with respect to land use approvals and things like that. But the next step in the process is if you absolutely refuse to make revisions in response to HCD's findings, then they can notify the Attorney General, and the Attorney General can potentially take the city to court for not having a compliant housing element. Before the Attorney General is allowed to do that, they're required to have two sit-down, meet-and-confer meetings with the city to try and resolve any sort of issues. So that is typically the process. But there's not exactly a set timeframe. If the city hasn't resolved any sort of issues that HCD has with the housing element and re-adopted a housing element by, I believe, the end of April, then HCD cannot finish its subsequent 60-day review period by the end of May 31st. And that is going to trigger another consequence, which is, to the extent the city has to undertake any sort of rezoning, instead of having three years, it'll have one year. So that's the first major consequence. But since the city's not proposing any rezoning in this housing element, and HCD's initial comments were that the city, you know, can meet its requirement for RENA via an ADU-only path, as long as it provides additional support, which I believe, you know, City Planner and EMC provided revisions to the housing element to address those comments. There's no reason to anticipate that HCD is going to require the city to add some sort of program of rezoning at this time. So hopefully that answers the questions.
Thank you. What I'd like to do now is, is actually, I know you've got another question. Yes, I was going to go to her. Councilmember Turner, go ahead, please.
Let me put my hand down. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Uh thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here. I just have a few comments on this document. First, I wanted to thank staff, Diane and Gloyce. For and our consultant too for the hard work on this uh. Housing element. I think what we have done here is we have achieved a good balance between. Meeting the requirements of the state and preserving the character of our city. Now, in several places, we tried to anticipate objections that HCD might have. And provided information to address those within the document. I think that's a good strategy and well done. Thank you. Um, there are two things I wanted to point out. The first one is in Silicon Valley. Starting in November of last year. And we had a big fallout last Friday. Many high-tech companies have laid off totaling about a hundred and fifty-four employees. Okay, from Intel. Twenty thousand, Meta, ten thousand, Google, twenty thousand, Amazon, and even the smaller companies like Eight by Eight in Campbell. Meta plans further reductions in March twenty twenty-three. Now, here's my concern. Some of our residents may be impacted by these layoffs, right? And this may affect our building of our ADUs. The city of Montesereno is not unique. In fact, uh. The San Jose will probably be one of the 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 most difficult areas with this layoffs. Um but I think what we should do is we should be prepared to think of incentives. Or changing some of our ordinances to lower the building, the cost of building the ADUs as time goes by. And to keep the ADUs. And to monetize and and to to keep the momentum actually going to building the ADUs. Because I I believe that we're gonna get not only in a California recession, but a worldwide recession. Because uh in in Ireland, for example, last week, they laid off ten thousand employees. So that's my first comment. My second comment is, and and this is uh one that Sergio talked about last week. Sergio had pointed out with all seriousness that we should do a study on how we can work towards SB ten projects. He pointed out that we can examine the guidelines, the parameters. For where an SB ten project might be acceptable. I think that's very good advice and we should take that uh into consideration. And we can look to work on these in the very near future. So. Those are the two things that I have. Uh I welcome your your comments on this again, once again. Thank you for the huge effort to staff. And the work that you put into this. Thank you.
Thank you. I we I heard comments in there, but I didn't hear a question. Do you have any questions for staff?
Uh my question is, can we look at this and adopt this into our housing element?
So regarding um the SB ten. On study, we do have that included in Program Q. That starts on page two dash fourteen, which is the uh study to analyze potential multifamily housing. And then um we do also have in, I think it's Program I. Which is our ADU incentives. Um. That as as I mentioned earlier, um at the mid-cycle of this. Um planning period, so roughly three to four years from now. That we would analyze where we're at with achieving um our Rena allocation and if. It appears that we're not on track to meet it by the end of um twenty thirty-one. That we would bring information to council to to reconsider other options, to make sure that we do meet it by the end of twenty thirty-one.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Go to um. Uh. Councilmember Lahi. Do we have an obligation anywhere that where we say we will review this annually? Or do we only say that we've got an obligation to review it mid-cycle? And or would we get a staff report on this annually?
Um there will be a staff report annually um in March. In um preparation for the annual report that we submit to the state. Um showing our progress on both the um new units, the number of new housing units that have been issued. As well as the status of all of the housing programs.
Just like we did last year.
Just like, and you will next month, too.
Okay, thank you. Um Councilmember Alahi, go ahead. You know, I'm I'm good for now. Yeah, I've gone to the question that just now. Okay, uh.
One question.
Councilmember Craig.
Uh my only question is, is there anything else that we should know about?
How that's an open.
I know, I know. Um nothing that I can think of off the top of my head. We tried to include all of the the major items um. In, you know, called out in the staff report.
It sure looks like you did. I happen to compliment you. I mean, when I saw the amount of. Work that had to go into this with the short turnaround time that they gave us, I. I can only imagine there were a lot of late nights involved, so thank you very much for all of your hard work. You know, we're we're a small city. We don't have uh. I mean, I I I did go to the League of Cities a couple of weeks ago, the convention there, and there were some cities that had. Twenty thirty people working on this element, you know, and they were always behind too, so. And I mean, you guys did a lot of work to get this done, so thank you.
Uh. So all council members have asked questions and at this point in time, what I'd like to do is open the public comment period. Uh or city council. And then uh. I would ask, uh if. You're attending virtually, please raise your virtual hand to make a comment. Uh do we have anyone raising their hand virtually? Okay, do we have someone in the audience that would like to speak? I see that we've got Mr. Lon Allen here. Uh come up to the podium. And you've got three minutes to speak.
Well, if the three minutes, Steve, I think you're the only person I I don't know. Uh in April, Mary and I will have lived in the same house here for forty-four years. And as everybody knows, I've had been dealing with the housing question for years, both on the S and A Commission and on the city council. I also lived through the nineteen eighty-five fire that got down as far as Broadway. In Las Gadas and the nineteen eighty-nine Loma Grande earthquake. That um knocked uh. Both of my uh chimneys askew, so we had to replace our chimneys. Uh I really have two comments. The first one, uh and I guess I'm stealing a phrase from a council. Uh person Turner is, it's a balancing act. Uh we. We have state Rena numbers that we have to comply with and we we have to comply with all state laws. And yet all of us are living here because we like the to use the tech techno. Technology term. We like the look and feel. If we wanted to live in a high-density area, we'd live in a condo in downtown San Jose or downtown San Francisco. So. You know, what we as city government have to do is balance. Uh keeping the look and feel that makes this unique and. Makes it the reason that Mary and I have lived here almost forty-four years with complying with state law. In my opinion, uh I think that the. Proposed housing element does just that and I want to join uh Councilman Craig and complimenting that Perkins. I. It. It is, you know. I spent fifty years as a licensed attorney. It's it's a beautiful piece of work. It's thoughtful. It's well-written and and kudos. Um I know there uh some have raised the issue of, well. Can't we um. You know, change zoning to add even more housing or uh encourage more building under SB nine? But what I'd like to point out, the I think the major responsibility of government is safety for its citizens, safety for residents. Uh I talked about the fire and the earthquake. You know, there are no proposals that will increase the envelope of Monte Serrino. We're boarded by State Highway Nine, Winchester and Kido. And if there's a problem, you gotta get out one of those ways. I think, you know, the Paradise Fire was in the middle of the night. If there were an emergency in the middle of the night with our twelve hundred plus households. Try to get the existing twelve hundred cars out. I think would be questionable. And of course, with Rena, we're gonna add a hundred ninety-three. Now, I think one of the advantages of ADUs is that. Maybe people will be smart enough to carpool. Uh but I think that uh. You know, we have complied with Rena. I think as we can't increase the envelope. To pack more households into. Our one square mile would really be uh dangerous to those of us who live here. And so I would encourage the council and the commission to adopt the housing element as is. I think we've done all that we can do to comply with state law and still fulfill our obligations to protect our residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Uh with that, I will close the public comment period and bring it back to council. Um for for comments and deliberation. Can we make a motion to you? You you could make a motion.
I haven't said anything yet, so I.
Absolutely, go ahead. We're reading.
Thank you, Senator. Yeah, I would like to uh commend staff and uh site architecture commissioners and uh. Also the current and former uh city council members for their tremendous amount of work that they've done on this. Uh I feel a little bit guilty because I I'm sitting here as a council member and I. Really would be as stressed as they do. I've been involved in this in a. Five or six weeks, so thank you. Thank you very much for all your hard work and uh it's uh congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah, I I'm just gonna comment on the SB ten issue. I I think the way this report is handling it is uh is very well done. I mean, it keeps the question open to them. Say, you know, that's every ten was a bill that was sponsored by YIMBY, so they got their way. Uh but uh we have to keep in mind maintaining Montesera's data credit at the same time. Uh we as provide affordable housing as much as possible and it it is do it, but. Obviously, we need to consider if something else comes up. So I think it's a good way to handle it, the report itself. Uh and I like I get again, like to go back to my comment that we should consider. Putting something in there, you know, modifying the report to the extent, and just be a couple of sentences, say, Montesera is also considering. Setting up an element or providing funds in a federal budget. To help subsidize housing and working with other cities and uh other nonprofit organizations that will fall into that. That would be my request to put that in.
Okay. Um I will, I would like to compliment staff as well, um but I won't and I'll echo what the other council members have said. But I do want to say. Uh and explicitly compliment and thank Councilmember Luthold and Councilmember Lawler, former council members. Uh that. They and it was it was Councilmember Luthold, former Councilmember Luthold in particular, that said, we should. Fulfill this through ADUs. It will preserve the nature of Monte Serrino. It will fulfill the housing requirement. And it will also meet affordability. I think those are very good points. He was the. The leader on that and he helped solicit site and architecture and I know. Uh. Counselor uh White went door to door as everyone did. Uh Chair Zidler went door to door and we all worked on that and. I think that what we're seeing now is the fulfillment of our obligation to create a hundred ninety-three units through two hundred and twenty-five. Uh letters of intent. So um with that. I think that I would like to entertain a motion. And I think that uh.
Well, I I I will move to adopt the report with the putting in the sentences that we discussed about adding. Some provision that Montesera will be looking into uh providing subsidies and some of the policies that I'd like to do. For it.
Okay, so. Question on the on that. So what we've got to do is um. Is adopt a resolution to adopt the sixth cycle housing element and what you're saying is you would like staff to include some wording on. Funding in the future without specifying what that funding is, but but the city is committed to doing so.
City is committed to considering that, providing some kind of a way. And subsidizing the housing. This would be part of the section that you've been reporting. I think that's why we want to do it for it all and help with it. I I also want to welcome the former mayor Lon Allen here. Good to see you. Thank you for trying it. That's one benefit of doing these in-person meetings. We we can see.
In-person meetings are. It's how you build relationships.
So um. Council, Councilmember Alahi, under section six. Uh in the uh resolution, it says that we're authorizing the city manager to make some. Uh non-substantive comments, but what you're saying is that before it's completed to make the the comment that you had described.
Correct, because that's a standard comment. Yes, it's a non-substantive, but I. We're we're giving it the commentary, you can put that in and I think we'll be okay with that.
Okay. So we've got a motion to approve and it's also recognizing the recommendation from the Site Architectural Commission.
So if I did that and just adding that one, uh a couple of sentences regarding the cities that come with the.
Uh just like the vice vice mayor, that can some motion. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Lahi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Yes.
And Mayor Mircik.
I, motion carried. With that. At uh seven fifty-five, I will adjourn the special meeting.
We got a step into that. And have a beer, beans, or we go have a glass of wine.